We are fast approaching the hour and we're 46 seconds late, so I think we need to start.
Not that time is an issue tonight, but it's something we want to be cognizant of.
Since I'm leaving for vacation tomorrow morning.
We've got approval of the minutes from the August 13th mining workshop. Any additions, deletions? If not, we need a motion to approve.
Samu.
Jerry seconded. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, passes unanimously. The second is the minutes of the September 11th meeting.
I have a change.
Okay.
And I've given this to Rita. On page six, under Commissioners Matters, change the first sentence to read. It said that I said that the I T E plan was wrong. Actually, I went back to the video and I stressed that I was upset about the traffic count issue regarding schools and said we have a problem with section 520 of the I T E traffic counts. If the usage is changing where people do not use school buses, then we have to revise the numbers to reflect that change. That's the only change.
Okay, any other amendments or changes? And if any of you all want to question you, you're on your own. All those in favor of the minutes with Donna's amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, approved unanimously. We never questioned Donna.
Publicly, anyway.
Item three is a presentation on something near and dear to the country.
Who approved those minutes and seconded them?
He made his own motion and got his own approval. But I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Just pick two.
I'll second that with amendments.
I was busy. But item three is something near and dear to the country's heart right now and the county's heart. It's economic development, so this is going to be a massive presentation, I'm sure, because you all have the answer to all the country's problems too, I hope.
I don't think it'll go that far.
You all, please, we've got a pile of paper up here and I guess it's going to be a big presentation.
You have packages that Helene put together for you. I think that the package that is in front of you in the blue folder is typical of what you might see for a package that we would send out in response to a request for basic information. It also includes a thumb drive that is an interactive piece that people can go through to get demographics and so on about our county. Our materials can really compete nationally with just about any location. We thank you very much for allowing us this time an opportunity to talk to you tonight. A few months ago, I was sitting in my family room watching as you were meeting and there was some discussion about economic development and I realized that we probably have not done our jobs in educating this group about what it is that we do. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, I'm entering my 28th year of Chamber management and I'm president of the Indian River County Chamber of Commerce. Prior to being here, I was in Annapolis, Maryland with that chamber and in Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, educated at Shippensburg University in Pennsylvania and the University of Delaware. Linda Schlitt Gonzalez is also with us tonight. She's a broker-owner of Caldwell Banker Ed Schlitt Real Estate. She was born and raised in Indian River County along with her brothers and sisters and she has been actively involved in our community and in economic development for over two decades. Helene Castle-Tine is also here. She's the Director of Economic Development in Indian River County at the Chamber. Helene earned her bachelor's in multinational business. She began her economic development career with the Florida Department of Commerce, which is now privatized to Enterprise Florida. She worked eight and a half years with the Commerce Department in small business development, community development, and international trade. She went on to serve as Economic Development Director for the St. Augustine-St. Johns County Chamber. She was the Economic Development Director for the City of East Point, Georgia, and Economic Development Manager for Collier County Government. And that was before coming here in 2003. She's a certified economic developer. She's the first certified economic developer that we've had in our county. She has, and she's one of approximately 35 certified practitioners in the state of Florida. She's also the current chairman of the Research Coast Economic Development Coalition, which is a coalition of the Martin County, St. Lucie County, and Indian River County Economic Development Agencies. The whole purpose of economic development, of course, is to create a positive impact on our local economy and it's to raise additional tax dollars, to give a diverse and healthy tax base to the county, providing the kinds of public services that we've become accustomed to. Positive economic development can bring lower unemployment, better paying jobs, better paying year-round jobs. The higher contributions to local charities, most of those come from our business community. Business and industry bring in more tax revenue than residential taxes and yet they demand less services. At this time, I'd like Linda to come up. She's going to tell you a little bit more about the economic development element to the comp plan. As you know, the economic development element of the comp plan, or I'm guessing you now, is not a required element by the Department of Community Affairs in Tallahassee, but it's an optional element that our county decides to take part in. And it's submitted with the county's comp plan to DCA for their comment. So at this time, Linda will come up and talk to you.
Thank you.
Good evening and thank you for giving us this opportunity. The goals and objectives of the Chamber's Economic Development Division are spelled out in the economic development element of the comprehensive plan. You'll see up there that the diversified economic growth through business recruitment and business retention activities and developing a skilled labor force through the encouragement of post-secondary vocational training facilities is the goal. As you know, the goals and objectives are currently being revised and that's sort of how it came up here before you, was that it was being discussed at one of your meetings. The basic premise of the goals and objectives of economic development that will remain the same. These goals can be accomplished through continuation of the collaborative efforts between the county, the Chamber, and the private sector. Getting back to basics, the Chamber's Economic Development Division encourages the retention and expansion of our existing industry base and addresses their concerns. So we encourage businesses, if they're having any kind of issues, to come to us so that we can intervene and hopefully stave off, you know, a lot of times it's communication, you know, minor issues that can be resolved before they get to be major problems. Enticing new targeted businesses to locate to our county. We do have a targeted industries list and we have just done a mailing, which Helene may talk about in her recruitment efforts that we have as an ongoing plan. Maintains a close working relationship with the local and state government, our industry associations, and site location consultants. Site location consultants are becoming a larger and larger part of this puzzle because in order, businesses often will hire these site selectors so that they can distance themselves. And one of the issues that it always has for us is obviously you don't know who it is specifically you're working with until after they come forward and make an announcement. So it's sometimes you're just dealing with a certain set of criteria, not a specific company, not specific people, but rather just this, what's been put forward by the site consultants. In its retention and recruitment efforts, the Chamber focuses on contributory businesses, those that sell goods or services outside of our local market and bring those dollars back into the local economy. This creates a multiplier effect as it moves through the economy and has a greater financial benefit to the county than a company who is stationed outside of Florida or outside of the United States and so generates something here, but all the revenues flow outside of our area. We specifically target those where the revenues will flow into the area. Recent efforts to retain Piper Aircraft are a perfect example of the importance of business retention as the majority of Piper sales are outside of our region and, of course, many of them outside of the country. Over the past decade, the Chamber has generated private funding for economic development through our Private Industry Partners Program. The program represents 75 local companies employing approximately 6,000 local residents. They have made investments of more than $400,000 in the past decade, which I think is truly remarkable considering the size of this community and the amount of businesses that we have to seek contributions from. The Chamber also leverages county funds through special grants and other funding sources. Through our efforts, in addition to county contributions, the Chamber has generated $1 million in total private investment over the past decade. However, the dollar amount, when you see these dollars amounts that come through when we're doing the budgeting, it doesn't include our overhead costs at the Chamber, doesn't include the direct expenses for the facility, the Chamber staff not paid by county funds, such as the Chamber President Penny, or equipment and maintenance costs, all of which add an additional $175,000 per year of contribution. Another way the Chamber leverages its funding is through partnerships. Since 1998, the Chamber has collaborated with neighboring counties in our regional economic development efforts. I know many in the county staff have been involved. There's some really exciting things that are going on on a regional basis. You probably are aware that it was sort of renamed the Research Coast. And we think that the future for this, over the next 10 years, I think you'll see quite and I think are really starting to be recognized and in the future, it's going to give us quite a name around the country. The Chamber invites the general public on manufacturing tours, providing residents an overview of the local companies, goods, products, and jobs. Been well received. I've had a number of people tell me they didn't even realize a lot of these companies existed and didn't know what they did or that they even had those jobs in Indian River County. Chamber staff is often called upon to speak to local civic organizations on topics related to economic development and is a regular guest of radio and TV interviews. We believe it's important to keep our residents informed that economic growth is not population growth, but provides a diversified tax base, better paying jobs for those that live here. We believe it's a real quality of life issue and sometimes it's real hard for us to get that separation because more jobs doesn't necessarily mean more people. It can vary, it often, more often means better jobs for the people that live here. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Helene to go over the marketing and recruitment of new industries.
I'm Helene Castle-Tine. And as Linda had mentioned, that we do have a good marketing tool. We have professionally designed marketing package, which includes collateral materials that compete with any U.S. location, big or small, as you'd heard from Penny. We have a flash drive that contains an interactive program that highlights the attributes of locating a business to Indian River County. And you happen to have one of those in your package. It's really fun to look at. And in fact, you have a whole marketing package, as Penny mentioned earlier. We utilize these in our target industry recruitment packages that we send to CEOs to give them a visual overview of our community. And they're sent to pre-selected targeted companies and they're also sent to Enterprise Florida when we respond to their proposals and to site consultants. Our Chamber website provides relevant statistical and demographic data and inventory of available industrial sites and buildings is maintained and available on the website. You also have a copy in your package of what that website looks like. So you can go on indianriverchamber.com, click on Economic Development, and in that drawdown menu, click on Commercial Properties. This is just a sample. The whole thing printed out is about four pages. We also advertise in publications that focus on CEOs of targeted industries and we submit editorial content highlighting our county as a desirable location to establish a business. Many of these publications are distributed at specific national and international trade We customize information for existing and prospective business clients. During staff visits to local businesses, owners are encouraged to promote our area to their own suppliers and vendors, again with the flash drive. We also partner with Enterprise Florida as an active participant in their promotional The Chamber's participated in the Acra Cost of Living survey since 1998. This data is compiled three times a year and is used by corporate and industrial site selectors and CEOs when comparing various regions related to the cost of doing business. A cost of living calculator is available on our Chamber website, comparing costs between Indian River County and the 300 or so participating Acra communities in the U.S. Our current cost of living is about 101, which is just slightly higher than the national average of 100. Last week, our annual industry appreciation event recognized local companies for their value-added community involvement. Awards are presented for architectural recognition, manufacturer of the year, Latin Business of the Year, and Company of the Year. Industry appreciation activities are held the third week of September throughout Florida in conjunction with the Governor's Diversification Awards Program. The Chamber assists local companies with their expansion plans by facilitating meetings with local government and utilities. A business assistance team will be assigned to offer technical help when needed. From large companies like Piper Aircraft, the CVS Distribution Center out west of town, and Macho Products, to smaller businesses such as Brewer International, Aeroshade, and Gerard Equipment, Chamber staff and volunteers offer technical assistance and expertise. Guess I got ahead of myself there. Florida's Enterprise Zone Program is intended to revitalize economically depressed areas through capital investment and job creation. The Chamber manages our local program. And just a little history here, following the hurricanes of 2004, the Chamber initiated discussions with the City of Euro Beach and Indian River County about establishing an enterprise zone. After gaining their cooperation, we then went to the Florida Legislature. The enterprise zone was designated the following year. The program offers certain tax credits and sales tax refunds to businesses operating within the zone. With limited tools in our toolbox, this program helps to retain and expand local business and can be used to recruit new businesses to our area. Since the zone was designated, we have processed about 65 applications for sales tax refunds totaling approximately $65,000. And I should note, it has no effect on the local sales tax. It's all state sales tax. Our Chamber has sponsored the first economic summit in Indian River County. We've contracted for a number of studies over the past years, several times inviting Bill Fruth, the president of Polycom, to present his findings on the state of the Indian River economy to the general public. In addition to the ones you see listed on the screen, excuse me, Polycom reports include the state of the Indian River economy, how to improve your local economy, the Indian River economy, and how we're doing. Now, we do have copies of all these reports, so if any of you would like to see a copy or have a copy sent to you, we can do that. That's not a problem. Just let us know. And last summer, we contracted with the Washington Economics Group to determine the economic impact of Piper's current operations. And with that, I'm going to give this back to Penny. As you might guess, there are still a lot of challenges that we have ahead of us as we go about our economic development efforts. And I wanted to mention, though, that when we were talking about the funding, that the funding for economic development, whether it comes from the county or whether it comes from our private industry partners, is held in separate bank accounts in separate banks and with separate audits so that none of those funds are co-mingled with any Chamber funds, which a lot of people don't understand.
Are they FDIC insured?
Yeah, they better be. Some of the challenges that we have as we head down the road is that, you know, as you can guess, our competition is increasingly aggressive, not just regionally, but nationally and internationally. You know, it isn't that long ago, we weren't even competing internationally and today we are. We have a need for improved and approved industrial land. That's crucial for us, meaning that the zoning and the infrastructure, having it shovel-ready is really important for the people that come in, site selectors that we talk to. With your help, we need to ensure that we don't suffer a net loss of commercial and industrial land use designations in the county. Over the years, there's been changes to designations and even with the county government buildings, there's been a change to some of the land use and that's resulted in perhaps a loss for us. Proposed increases to the current impact fee schedules is a challenge in these economic times and would be a real detriment for us as we market Indian River County. We need an enhanced economic development toolbox that offers more than just the minimum in terms of local incentives to eligible businesses in order to compete with our neighbors and beyond. We need all of us to work together to change the negative perception that our county is not business-friendly. We need to continue to educate our residents, and as Helene mentioned, we do tours, we go out and talk to clubs, we are on the radio, we do TV interviews and so on, to talk about what economic development is and that it doesn't necessarily mean more rooftops, it means better tax base, it means better jobs for the people we have here, but it's not about growth. And we need to have enough jobs and activities available in our county to keep our young professionals here. Business enhances our county's tax base and business is the largest contributor to our community's charities and nonprofits. We appreciate the time that you spent with us this evening. We're glad that we had the opportunity to make a presentation to you and we hope it's been educational. We hope that you've learned a little bit more about economic development and about what the Chamber does for economic development in our county. And we hope that we can count on all of you to join our efforts to bring better paying year-round jobs with benefits to Indian River County. Thanks very much.
Thank you. I think that, you know, we have that with the EAR and the economic development coming up at some point. I hope you all have your wish lists made because I think that you cannot emphasize this more. The economy today, but in this county, the way the developments and every study we've seen about where we're headed if we do not do this. So I think that you're in the middle there, need for an enhanced economic development toolbox really says it all. And, you know, whether it's impact fee releases or job credits or something, we have got, you know, if you want economic development and people to come here, it's not free anymore. It's something we have to invest in and I hope that the taxpayers here understand that. You all do a wonderful job.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. And thanks for the flash, pocket flash, whatever they call these things. These are great, you know? I lose them. I've got them laying all around now. Maybe I can keep this one for a quarter or so. Item four is Grace Woods West. It's an item on consent. Does anybody care to pull this? If not, I need a motion for approval.
I would do adopt as presented.
Second.
You got them? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you. All right. Item five is items not on consent. We have first on the agenda is Bristol Bay Commercial, a request for a major site plan approval to construct 92,500 square feet of commercial complex. I repeat, to construct 92,500 feet of commercial complex. Something we haven't heard for a while.
Yeah, really.
Okay. John, you doing it?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hammer.
Rock on.
Sorry to interrupt you, but Mr. Chairman, the next two items are quasi-judicial.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You should go ahead and ask if anyone wishes to testify.
No, with all the credentials earlier, I majored in graduation. I was a little intimidated, so. This is quasi-judicial. Anyone who wishes to speak from the public and/or staff need to be sworn. Actually, I'd like to go ahead and may as well do Bristol Bay Gator Group as well because they have to be sworn as well, if that's all right. If you want to stand up and be sworn, come on down. All right.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, John.
Thank you, Chairman Hammer. John McCoy with the County Planning Department. And this is a request for major site plan for approval of essentially a mixed-use project. And the site is located near the intersection of County. This aerial shows, again, the commercial site relative to the Bristol Bay project, which this is the commercial portion of, the improvements that have been done to date and the proximity to the other uses and the proximity to the intersection. The next slide is a detailed aerial of the site and it shows that most of the site is vacant and cleared, essentially the eastern two-thirds of the site. And that was cleared with the Bristol Bay project and it was citrus prior to it being cleared. It also shows that the rightways that have been abandoned and it shows trees that are in the southwestern corner of the project. And then the building in the rear of the site is a three-story building and again, that's a mixed-use retail, office-type use. This is the traffic circulation. This is really part one of the traffic circulation. And for anything to get built on the site, the westernmost driveway and the centermost driveway require right turn lanes and those would be eastbound right turn lanes at the subject site. And this is where it gets a little tricky, is in part two of the traffic circulation plan. And the reason it gets tricky is because the applicant's dependent upon the previous developer of the residential portion for some of the improvements. There is a developer's agreement in place and the previous developer begun construction of Bristol Bay Drive and Sunrise, both, and took those to a fairly advanced state but did not finalize or complete construction of Bristol Bay Drive or Sunrise. So that's some of the improvements that need to be complete by the previous developer unless this applicant essentially steps into their shoes and gets authority to step into their shoes and complete those improvements. And traffic engineering is, in their analysis of the site, is that essentially with the limit of what you saw in part one, those two right turn lanes, that the site will support essentially 114 peak-hour trips. Once you get beyond that, the rest of the improvements that you see in phase two are required. And those improvements are right and left turn lanes at Bristol Bay Drive, a traffic signal at Bristol Bay Drive in 510. The completion essentially certifying that all Bristol Bay Drive and Sunrise are up to county's code, which they're not at this point in time, needs to be done so those driveways on Bristol Bay Drive and Sunrise can be utilized. And then there's also a small driveway in the back that needs to be complete. As I indicated, there is a developer's agreement for these improvements. Not so much completion of Bristol Bay Drive, but the traffic signal and the right and left turn lanes are covered in developer's agreement. If the applicant ones and those developer's agreements indicate that the county will construct those improvements when the county does the widening of 510, the developer of the commercial portion can advance that if they want to do that on their own ahead of the county, but those would be temporary improvements, temporary signal, temporary turn lanes that would, again, would all get redone by the county when the county came in and redid those turn lanes. There has been some question about left turn into the site during the part one. And in talking to traffic engineering, through the right-of-way permit, they would allow the center driveway to be used for right, for, excuse me, left turn in to that driveway on an interim basis until the widening of 510 occurred.
What about a left turnout?
It would also, they indicated that they would allow for essentially a full movement driveway as a temporary if they could, through the right-of-way permit, essentially get themselves comfortable that the movements would operate smoothly. They would look into detail with the right-of-way permit.
Is there a timeframe when that's going to be completed, that 510?
510, it's.
I noticed from there, eastward is under construction now. I noticed from there, eastward is under construction now and this section here.
In talking to Public Works, they're saying approximately three to six years and the reason they're giving a range is really because of right-of-way acquisition and that's really the big key with getting that project underway is the right-of-way acquisition component of it.
John, before you go on, and that southeast section of the project in the parking lot, there's an ingress egress there, what street does that go out to?
510.
Yeah.
In the southeast.
Right.
It goes out to Sunrise, which is 46th Avenue and I'll talk a little bit more about that.
That's through that little residential area?
Yes, correct, as I go forward because that's, you know, one of the staff's concerns.
That's Sunrise?
46th Avenue.
It's 46th Avenue, it goes through those, the houses is what it, that's what you're thinking about.
It runs down the east side of that little neighborhood.
Okay.
And.
Thank you.
The next item I'd like to talk about is the parking and the applicant conducted a parking study and that's allowed in our chapter 954 for mixed-use projects and the concept is that these uses will have different peak parking demands and essentially share spaces over time. Offices may peak at one time, restaurant at another and then retail at another and we've done parking studies at other places before. Devera Mall has a parking study down at 12th Street in US 1, also the Woodies up in the Roseland Plaza also conducted a parking study, so those have been done throughout the county. The applicant did one, it revealed that 406 spaces were required and they're providing 426, the staff feels comfortable with that. As far as stormwater goes, all of the stormwater improvements are in the ground, the pipes, the lakes, all those things, but the system is not yet certified, it's completed. So again, the previous developer took it to a near completion stage but didn't quite cross that threshold of having all the i's dotted, t's crossed, so this applicant's going to need to do that and first of all, they're going to need to make sure that they have authorization. Again, it was part of a larger plan, but we want to see authorization before they get site plan release and we allow them to go to construction, that they can use the facility and there's no reason to doubt that they can. And then secondly, before they get a CO, the entire system is going to need to be complete and finalized, all is i's dotted and t's crossed and that'll need to be done prior to a certificate of occupancy, the first one. As far as environmental issues go, there really aren't a whole lot on this site, there are no mitigatable wetlands, there's no endangered species, there's no native upland habitat. The main issue that we've had is tree preservation and tree mitigation and if you, and I'll talk a little bit about more of that in the landscape plan, but as you can see, the trees that we're concerned about are primarily located in the southwest corner of the site. With that, I'd like to touch on the landscape plan, that's the two areas where I've highlighted, those triangles on the landscape plan are the two areas where there is tree preservation and also tree mitigation that's going to occur on-site. The applicant's also going to go off-site for some of their mitigation because there's substantial tree mitigation required with this project. As far as the buffers go, the dark green buffer is required a six-foot opaque feature, the lighter green buffer that you see around the remainder of the perimeter of the project requires a four-foot and other than that, the landscaping is fairly similar as far as the number of trees and things like that. This is within the Wabasha corridor, so the buildings will have foundation plantings as well with the landscape plan. As far as dedications and improvements, in this slide, I didn't include the ones I talked about previously, the traffic signal, the left and right turn lanes, because I didn't want to be redundant. These are dedication improvements that are not part of the traffic improvements necessarily. The light blue line running along 510 is a sidewalk that's required and they'll need to construct that or bond that prior to certificate of occupancy. The little orange sliver is additional right-of-way needed for 510 to complete the widening and it's just a little bit, a very small sliver as you can see. In addition to that, with this right turn lane, once 510 gets widened, the plans for 510 are fairly far along and they think they can accommodate the right turn lane without getting any additional right-of-way for the site, but as engineering feels within the next month or two, they'll know that definitively and there's a condition that if that right turn lane does require additional right-of-way, that they're going to need to revise that area, that portion of the site to accommodate the right-of-way needed for that right turn lane and then redesign the site in that particular area in that southwest corner of the site.
And they're donating that right-of-way, John?
Yes, they are. The right-of-way highlighted in orange is being dedicated without any compensation. We spoke a little bit about the connection at the south end earlier and that is the extension of 46th Avenue. 46th Avenue, if you go up there today, actually runs right through the site, the right-of-way's been abandoned, we have an easement over and it's a dirt road right now, it's got a dirt road and it's got a ditch. The ditch provides drainage for the neighborhood of the south and the road provides access to 510 for the residents to the south and they essentially get to go straight north and take a right and go over to the beach for, you know, recreational activities or other activities. That will be, even will be released. The road will become part of the development, the ditch will be rerouted and piped via this blue line, so it'll start at the same point, come up the side of the building, up the landscape area and end at the same place. There'll be an easement for the residents and a connection, vehicular connection made for the residents, so the residents will essentially be able to come through the site and back out to 510, it'll be a little more circuitous and this is an interim solution. Once Sunrise gets complete, there's a transition right here and if you've been out to the site, you've seen it's a fairly rough transition, it's a very rough grade and that needs to get fixed, get those elevations so they match and that will allow the residents in the neighborhood to the southwest to use Sunrise to get to eventually a signalized intersection. So in the interim, they're going to use the green arrows and eventually they'll use Sunrise and once Sunrise is connected, the easement that we get for the driving aisle that's covered by those arrows can be released.
Could you say something in here about this will facilitate future interconnection of the adjacent property to the south, is that, and they're not anticipating building, they're just taking care of their traffic, is that what that implies?
This connection will allow connect traffic through. There's a separate connection that was requested by one of the owners and it's right at this level, right here, it's a second connection and what that owner's anticipating, if the property to the south ever transitions to a commercial zoning district, that these would be, the properties could be connected at this point as well because this essentially would go away, there'd be a connection to Sunrise and then essentially a connection right here if these properties ever did transition.
Okay.
So that's what we're talking about facilitating that interconnection possibly between two properties in the future.
John, didn't you say the center connection was going to be open for left turn and not the westernmost one?
The center connection is the preferred point by traffic engineering.
Right. But at, in the beginning, they're going to be able to use both for left turns and right turns?
They would be, the preference is to use the center.
Right.
Both these driveways will be in and operational in the first.
Stage.
Portion, yes.
For left and right.
They're just not going to put the concrete block in the center when people can go left and right in the center.
Well, I just thought, just the center one was going to be that way, not both of them.
510's built up.
Traffic engineering prefers the center one, but they indicated that there shouldn't be anything prohibiting those movements at either. With that, I would like to get to the recommendation and staff does recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission grant site plan approval with the conditions as recommended by staff and I neglected to say at the beginning of my presentation, I did hand out two updates, one was a corrective page, I corrected a figure and one was an updated architectural because we've given you an older one and the one in your, the one I handed out to you confirms the building height. And thank you.
So Bob, where does Bristol Bay stand with its construction? Is it dead in the water completely or the economics killed it or?
Well, I think, you know, originally WCI was the developer of Bristol Bay and they did have.
They burrowed in.
Pardon me?
They burrowed in.
Yeah, they had some financial problems and the, essentially, I think the site was sold to another corporation, IHP, is that correct, John?
Correct. IHP is a partner with WCI and they were the sort of the land bankers, so they took it back from WCI when WCI had their financial difficulties.
Okay, and now, and now what we have is really, we have two different developers on the site. We've got this developer who's doing the commercial part and then the other part that IHP, I guess, is still involved in and maybe a subsequent developer, they are pursuing maybe additional commercial on the rest of the site as well as some residential. So, no, it has not gone away, but it is definitely.
Static.
Yes.
My point, obviously, I'm going to the point of they have to make some arrangements with the whomever owns that now and I guess Bruce will talk to us about that, no? No?
Talk to the engineer, yeah.
Talk to the engineer, okay, we're here. Okay, that's my concern of, how are you going to get that done? Who's going to talk to who? Is there any, is there anything going on now to make this happen or is it just a wish?
Go to bidle with, show up to bidle and start it. Basically, the existing developer for the commercial piece, if this is approved, this helps him push WCI to complete their site, they can, it'll help in that manner. This is something we've been trying to negotiate for two to three years, actually, they were trying to buy it previously and that fell through and so, I mean, this would help them out. I think, and John, you may correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the stormwater has been certified with St. John's. I believe I've received an email from them saying that stormwater was complete and certified, but that's something I can work out with John, but our issue is utilities and the roadways.
The roadway, I guess the, so your intention is to not do or not wanting to build the Bristol Bay Drive up to your entrances into the commercial until you want your, the other developer, WCI or whomever to put it in and you pay your fair share at that time?
No.
Because in development agreements, I mean, you all could pave it and then have it charged back to them and get reimbursed when they're built, it's just cash out of your pocket or.
They've already, they've already paid a developer's agreement for the improvements on 510.
Who's paying?
What about paving, what about paving on their property though?
Paving on the property, if they would allow it, I'm sure my client would build it and there's nothing really to say, you know, an agreement to say, you know, they can come back and get money from them. It's partially finished, it's just not certified.
Because normally, that's one or the other controls the site and one does all the work and then the other people pay their proportionate share and I didn't know with, it seems strange that they wouldn't let you just do it and accredit it in a proportionate basis, but.
Well, and that's something we tried to work out with them, so then if we get approval here, it gives us a little more.
So you were in contact, you were in contact with them, that's, they're talking to you?
Anyone else have questions?
My questions were all answered.
I've had a question about the elevation, so if you, before we get to that, if you have a question, go ahead.
I'd just like to know, I understand you said that the 510 improvements were in design right now or have completed design, where are we in that?
They're in design, last I checked with our engineering department, they were not quite at the 90% point of design as I recall our conversation on it, so they're fairly far along.
So what would you say is the timeframe for completion of the 510 improvements?
They're talking three to six years to start construction.
Okay.
So I couldn't speculate on.
If you're wondering if they're going to finish 510 before they finish their project and the county, we finish ahead of them, forget it.
The answer's no.
We never have yet.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Jory, on the elevations, we've got elevations, it looks like they're on the inside, what does, what is the, does the backside on the road, the 510 side match what we see? Is it, does this wrap around, we're not looking at blank buildings in the back?
No, I don't think, I think of, and with John, your supplemental package had the latest, greatest architectural.
This is, this is the inside?
I believe so, it's about, it's.
Three-story building in the back.
That would be the back.
This is the back building.
One of them is front, one of them.
And all the architecture is similar on all sides since.
Okay, that's, I just, you know, we.
That is representative of all the sites.
We oft sometimes forget about the back, when people drive by, we find, we hear about it again, so I.
Well, and we pushed the buildings up to the 510 just to give a presentation of a corridor, not a parking lot, I think it'd be, look much nicer.
Right. Any other questions for either staff or the engineering, Jory?
Yeah, and the parking spaces?
Yes.
So could they get by with 20 less then? I mean, you've got the required per code, 458 and then you've got the required for parking study, 406.
Well, if I may with that, our previous parking study wasn't approved, it came up to 426, so our site plan was based on 426. It was revised, now it's down to 406 and the developer would gladly remove those 20 spaces and free us up to.
I mean, I think for your head it is that you would create, he, I'm sure wants more green space or put more, plant more oak trees or spread it around.
They would free up space because.
Yeah, I'd like to see 20, 20 more oak trees go in that plant.
And that will work, it could take it down to the 406, again, that limits the applicant's flexibility going forward, here to do something, he might have to revisit you all, but that would work as far as this plan getting approved, they could.
Well, I think that's why he was asking though, I mean, if they, I'm sure they don't want to pave it if they don't have to, but, you know, there may be more, I don't know which is more costly, putting in the trees or not, but I'd buy that.
I would too.
Dr. Baker, do you have an idea as to which 20 spaces you want to see taken out?
Well, and to be honest, those plans you have don't really show where the trees are and I assure you, I can modify it so we can save as many trees as possible.
You're saying everything's negotiable.
Yeah, it, with this project, we've been given thresholds and we try to meet them, you know, as many spaces.
I think if you're going to do, I think if you're going to do that, that from a practical standpoint, I mean, I would prefer it myself and parking and shade if I can too, but I think that in certain cases, maybe larger open spaces to give trees plenty of room and a couple of trees, a little more green space than spacing them in between parking spaces would be better, but I'd certainly be in favor of letting them go to 406 and creative if they can save some trees finally.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any way that that 40-inch DPH oak tree can be saved by moving that or is that in a position where it won't be?
I'm not sure, I can't remember where that one is, there's a couple on there, is that by the entranceway or is that?
I'm not sure exactly.
Yeah, and I will try my hardest to save as many as we can for the big oaks, so I think removing 20 spaces will allow.
Maybe give you, allow you to be, allow you creativity to show.
Yes.
All right, any other questions for them? Okay, it's, anybody else from your side want to speak, because it's not really a public hearing. All right, commissioners, we, questions or we need a motion? Move ahead.
You want to make the motion?
I have one question, I don't see, I don't remember reading anything in here that allows for a two-way movement on that center driveway, does that need to be added in here?
Correct, the staff's report reflects those are both ride-in, ride-out maneuvers because it reflects the build-out condition, not the interim, so traffic engineering and speaking with traffic engineering, because they have a similar situation on 53rd Street says, through the right-of-way permit process that they would look at making those essentially full movement driveways for that interim period.
Okay, so it's nothing we have to add to a motion then?
For the interim.
If you want to clarify, I'd say we ought to have a motion to accept staff's recommendations and if you want to clarify, have temporarily allow the full movement then and the reduction of spaces.
Yeah, just one question. In the southeast corner, which is Sunrise Drive coming in there, it kind of goes in and then comes back out again, is there a reason for that, is that planned bus stop or anything in the future?
Yes, exactly, that's a pull-over for a transit stop to.
Future?
I remember that.
Yes, yes.
So it's. That's a possibility.
It's part of the plan and should eventually.
This will obviously interconnect with Bristol Bay as part of our.
That's Craig's place.
And that's all I have, I just wanted to see what that was.
Okay, if we're ready for a motion, I will entertain. Yes, sir.
And reduce the parking to 406 as we discussed and increase the green space.
Okay.
And allow temporary full movement driveway on the center one?
Yes.
Just for clarification, do I have a second?
Second.
Craig's second, it's okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign?
Just one clarification.
Carries unanimously, so clarify what, I'm sorry.
Just one clarification on the parking space reduction. We typically, when we look at stuff like this, what we try to do is have the site inspected, have all the trees inspected because it was a 40-inch, 40-inch oak mentioned.
Right.
We try to prioritize the healthy trees and make sure that it's, so we have somebody inspect the site to really make sure that what we're.
What we're saying is you have, you and, you have the full faith and power of the P and Z behind you to make this right. P and Z behind you to make this right.
Thank you.
And species, too. You could look at that, too, whether it's a live oak or a-
Yeah, Laurel oak.
Whatever little that may give you.
Okay. See you.
Next item, next item up is-
Gator Group.
Gator Group, request for preliminary plat approval for five-lot medical subdivision to be known as Gator Group Medical Subdivision. Who's up?
Brian.
Brian? Brian lost.
You get this one, Brian?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman, go ahead, please, sir.
My name is Brian Freeman. I'm a senior planner with Indian River County, and, okay, we've got the presentation up. This is a request for preliminary plat approval for a medical subdivision to be known as Gator Group Medical Subdivision. There we go. Technical difficulty. Okay, this is a zoning map of the site and the surrounding area, and the site is located at the southwest corner of 37th Street and Indian River Boulevard, and it is a medical zoning. There is also medical zoning to the west of the site, and then to the north of the site is a mix of OCR, which is office, commercial, residential, and RM8 multifamily residential zoning. South of the site is RS3 single-family residential, and then to the east of the site is actually land that's within the city limits of Vero Beach. And this is an aerial view of the site and the surrounding area, and the site is actually a former citrus grove, and most of it is wetlands. Of those, approximately 7.5 acres are esterine wetlands, and approximately 15 acres are exotic hardwood wetlands, which are mostly covered with Brazilian pepper trees. Looking at some of the properties around the site, kind of to the northwest of the site is what's known as the cartel medical center, and that's also known as the 777 building. And to the west of the site is the hospice, and further west is the hospital, Indian River Medical Center. And I'll just note that to the south of the site is the Vero Beach Country Club Golf Course. And this is a view of the proposed preliminary plat, and the project site is almost 26 acres in area, and five lots are proposed to be created via this preliminary plat. And the purpose of the preliminary plat is to subdivide the land and show the location for the infrastructure for that subdivision. This would include the stormwater ponds and the streets and utilities. Each lot would be subsequently developed later via separate site plans. So, at this point, we're just looking at the infrastructure for the subdivision and not for any of the development that would occur on any of the lots. And looking at traffic circulation for the project, there are, in total, what would eventually be three access locations to the site, and the first one is a full-movement access from Indian River Boulevard, and this will include a southbound right turn lane and a northbound left turn lane that will be installed by the developer at that entrance. And the second entrance is from 37th Street, and this entrance will be restricted to right turns only, so that'll be right turns in only, which will also have a eastbound right turn lane, and then right turns out only, which means that trips exiting the site on the 37th Street will need to go east towards Indian River Boulevard. And those turning movements will be restricted by a concrete separator. And then the third access location I'd like to highlight is an interconnection that's gonna be provided at the west property line to the site, and the purpose of this is to allow what could eventually be a interconnection to the hospital, which is to the west of the site, and that's shown here on this aerial. And as you can see, the, eventually, there would be a, the road could, road or drive of some sort could be developed between the site and the hospital, and actually, part of that, we already have a site plan that's in for an expansion of a hospital parking lot, which is gonna accommodate a portion of this interconnection. So, once that middle segment develops between the site and the part for the hospital parking lot expansion, that would then provide an alternate access to a hospital from the east and the south, similar in a manner as is already provided on the west side of the hospital by 35th Street. And looking at some, the environmental issues with the site, as I stated, there's about seven and a half acres of esterine wetlands on the site, and these are proposed to be conserved within the two conservation tracks. There will be a small area of impact to the wetlands, and this will occur where the street goes between the conservation tracks. Not that entire length of the street between the conservation tracks is esterine wetlands, just the easternmost part of that along the site's east boundary. And the conservation tracks in total are about 10 and a half acres in size, and the esterine wetlands on the site are to be rezoned to Con 2, which is the zoning district for esterine wetlands along the Indian River Lagoon, and the applicant will be required to submit a rezoning application for those esterine wetlands prior to issuance of a land development permit for the project. And also, I just wanna note that in addition to being reviewed by the county, those esterine wetlands are also being reviewed by the St. John's River Water Management District and the Army Corps of Engineers. And I'd like to just highlight a few other required improvements for the project, and these include a five-foot-wide sidewalk along the project's Indian River Boulevard frontage, and also what would be a sidewalk along the 37th Street frontage due to some constraints because of existing drainage ditches and swales along 37th Street. The developer's gonna pay the construction cost to the county for the future construction of that sidewalk instead of building it with the development. Internally, there'll be sidewalks along one side of the internal streets within the project, and those will be five feet wide. And then along the project's Indian River Boulevard and 37th Street frontages, there'll be a 20-foot-wide roadway buffer with four-foot opaque feature provided. And in summary, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission grant preliminary plat approval with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions of staff?
Yes.
Jory?
On Indian River Boulevard, there'll be a median cut, then?
Yes, that's to be constructed by the developer.
And that's gonna have a right, a left turn deceleration lane?
Yes.
Will that interfere with the other lane that's going to 37th Street now?
Yeah.
No, and that's one of the reasons why the drive is located as far south as it is, is to avoid conflicts with that intersection at 37th Street.
That kinda backs up a lot there right now, that, that deceleration lane.
Right, right.
In the morning, it's really backed up. So, you feel it'll be okay?
Yeah, our traffic engineering staff has, you know, approved this location.
I'm just stunned that this didn't trip any of the traffic models. Donna's kinda chuckling.
I didn't know, what about, is it, is, we know we're all big on left turn, do we, it's, we do the left, we don't have to have an acceleration lane going north, we just, we'd be all, just through the turn, through the median, okay? What is the clear area on the south piece down here? There's a little break in the land that looks like a-
Oh, I think what you're looking at, actually, that's not part of the project site. There is a little notch in the southeast corner of the site where the southern boundary extends a little further south, but I think that's just a part of the graphic.
So, that's part of the country club? I mean, I just was curious, I was thinking, trying to figure out, where would, I guess it's further to the south, 26th Street, if we ever connected, if we ever made, went through or did anything with 26th Street? Wasn't there some discussion about trying to connect?
Yeah, there was.
Yeah, actually, let me tell you, the-
I mean, I hadn't gone very far, but the reality is, I was just wondering where it might come through.
Well, actually, it's gone all the way. The study has.
Okay.
It's gone all the way, what way?
Well, let me tell you, the MPO Long Range Transportation Plan had a provision that the MPO would look at the feasibility of doing Aviation Boulevard Extension, which would go from US1 to Indian River Boulevard, south of the hospital. And we spent a lot of time and effort, had two consultant studies done, looked at all the alternatives, all the constraints, and it proved unfeasible to do it for a number of reasons there.
So, it's dead? It's dead a lot?
It's dead, but the alternative that the MPO approved was to try to do inner connections in that area and maybe provide a western connection to the hospital from US1. And actually, this plan here facilitates the, what the MPO approved for Aviation Boulevard Extension. This will connect to the hospital, and will have more inner connections in that area that will, will facilitate some of the objectives that were looked at with the original Aviation Boulevard Extension proposal.
Okay.
Has, have you talked to hospice and that group to see that 26, that southern access is okay, or is that just in the, looks good, I'd like to have area?
I'm not sure exactly what extent of conversations have been with the hospice. I know the location you're looking at is across from the stormwater pond that's just north of the hospice site.
Well, I understand.
You know, the, that drive would be constructed whenever that parcel, which is part of the hospital property that is to the north of the hospice, between the hospice building and-
Okay.
And we have had discussions with the hospital-
And their-
The hospital staff, and they-
They don't have any gas?
To it.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we'll-
I just want to comment on the buffer for the enhanced wetlands. There is a buffer, that's, that's the-
25 feet.
That's the 25-foot buffer there.
There's 10-foot and 25-foot.
It kinda widens up, kinda widens up there.
They dropped to 10 around the stormwater retention because your buffer bumped.
I see it, I see it. Thank you.
Yeah, it varies in width from 10 to 25 feet.
Just quick, out of curiosity, stormwater track one is dry retention. Why is that instead of wet retention? I thought we were trying to get everything with wet retention. I'm sure you have a reason.
Hopefully.
I believe it's to satisfy a pre-treatment requirement for St. John's. The, I know particularly in residential developments, we've gone away completely from dryer retention, but still in commercial sites, there have been, you know, appropriate times to use dryer retention.
We can check with their engineers if we'd like, when they come up. Any other questions of staff? If not, we'll invite the applicant to speak.
Do his dance.
Is, would, Bruce, if you could ask, one of the engineers maybe could answer her question, or you can't-
Brian had it right, it was pre-treatment required by St. John's.
Okay.
That's what Dean was shouting from back here. Bruce Barquette for the applicant, and I have nothing to add unless you have any particular questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? If not, this is not a public hearing necessarily, but, okay. If not, we need a motion?
Move approval of staff recommendation.
Greg?
I'll second that.
Craig? Greg and Craig programmed on. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Passes unanimously.
Good luck, guys.
Next item on our discussion is we've got A, B, C, and D. We're gonna have four elements. EAR is coming up, the first being comprehensive plan on potable water, the sub-element-
I wish you would have had some information on it.
The planned recreation and open space element, the intergovernmental coordination element, and then the capital improvement, improvements element. So, I think the, walk through these capital improvements, maybe try.
For the hotter water sub-element, also, we have here Mike Pachkis from Utilities Department. Actually, Mike's been really helpful to us to putting this element together and reviewing and make sure that we have all the requirements. Okay, these potable water, like sanitary sewer and solid waste that we brought to you before, reviewed by Utility Advisory Committee, and, you know, they give their blessing in these, for this element. As far as the capacity, again, as you know, there's lots of information in these EAR, and we are not gonna go through all of them because I'm sure that you are ready and familiar with it, and you don't want me to spend lots of time, but I'm just giving you some highlights. Again, as you know, the capacity of the plants increased between 1995 and 2006, also demand increased. And one thing that Utilities they did, they really expand between 1995 and 2006, and one of the things that they did, they took over lots of these old private plant. As you can see, there were 29 plant that was a private plant, they all decommissioned, and now they're all served by the Utilities Department, only three of them remain. Again, the number of the customer increased and so forth, and one thing that, actually, they are underneath here, you cannot see it, but, okay, good. Only one item that we are not really happy about is, and that's per capita water use, which actually, that per capita water use increased from 61.6 per capita to 104 gallon per capita per day.
Wow.
And we really think that there is several reason for it.
Did the sewer sod increase equally or not?
That guy's took it.
Slash burn? Go ahead.
And we really think there's several reason for it. One, again, one thing that's really good, and we always want is more landscaping, and more landscaping, you'll have, of course, more water use. And also, many of the houses that they build, especially the new houses, they have swimming pool. Again, that would increase the use. Also, this is a per capita water use for all of their customers, including their commercial and gas year customer. Again, more commercial and gas year customer you have, also, that would impact-
This is total water divided by total population.
By total-
Well, that's, that's kind of, and it used to be 61.6, but it's a big leap, but I mean, that's kind of a really skewed number, I would say.
Exactly, and that is why, you know, we really wanna emphasize in this element on water conservation. Again, because we really would like to bring that per capita down. Again, this is the 1995 service area, this is the 2006, and you can see, in 2006, now they have the main line in most of the, or actually, all of the urbanized area of the county that they could serve all the area within the urban service area. This graph shows the projected demand and also capacity for the water. The lower line, this is the line that shows the demand based on the actual number of the customer that they're projecting to have. The second line, the middle line, this is demand plus all the people that they rested and reserved the capacity. Those are the people that they buy the concurrency ahead of the time, but they are not connected to the system yet. The upper line here, this is the capacity. As you can see, they have two big projects from the capacity expansion. One of them is right now that they are doing the expansion here in 2008, which is gonna bring it to 18.21 million gallon per day, and then they are planning to do another expansion in 2025 to bring it up to 24.65.
Obviously, there's some upper limitation where you can't draw anymore, you can't get blood from a tourniquet. What, in 2030, somewhere around the limit?
Okay, actually, right now that they're doing their expansion, they are asking for three wells in the north county, and actually, St. John told them that they better to get six well instead of the three because of the drawdown of the wells. Actually, and this six well that they are digging right now is really sufficient to support them all the way till year 2030 and even beyond. However, later on, you can see, we are not in a St. John Water Management District water cautious area. However, to be proactive, Utilities Department, they're trying to find another alternative source of water, and we're gonna discuss this one a little bit later on, because eventually, we know that, you know, not because of what we're doing in our county, but because of our surrounding county, maybe we need to look at the different alternative for the water.
So, Saad, don't we have a well field potentially that could be expanded still in the south, south county?
Actually, in south county, they are also adding one more well, I believe, yes?
That's correct.
In the south county, also, they're adding one more well, yes.
Saad.
And also, one other thing that I would like to mention is that with the improvement that they're doing in 2008, they have all the wells, they have all the membrane and they have all the wells, they have all the membrane and everything ready even for their two thousand and twenty-five expansion. The only thing that they have to put in two thousand and twenty-five expansion is that one membrane is keyed only for one of the wells. Everything else is there, yes?
So, you know, in the last year, there's been a lot of conversation, a lot of meetings associated with alternatives to wells into the Florida. But what you're saying is that we are going to satisfy our water needs through two thousand and thirty with wells?
Yes.
Are there going to be other alternatives considered?
However, yes.
And reduce the wells?
Exactly, they want to have this in conjunction with the wells. And they are planning, again, you later on, you could see, actually, we are adding the new objective and new policy based on our coordination with the Utilities Department that by two, by two thousand and eighteen, they're going to have at least eighteen million gallon per day capacity drawn from another source other than the Florida aquifer.
C fifty-four.
And this is again, exactly. Right now, as you know, first they were looking at the surface water.
That's a huge.
Then they look at the Boulder Zone.
That's more than we have now.
And right now, they are looking at C fifty-four canal. But nothing is cast in stone because, again, they are still working with the St. John to see what is really the best way of doing that one. And through the new objective and policies that we are adding, by year two thousand and twelve, I believe, we're going to get, get there a little bit later on, they're going to identify what that source is and then they're going to go after the construction and so forth, that they are ready by two thousand and eighteen to actually use the other source, whatever that one is.
Saigon, with, with regard to the alternative sources.
Yes.
And Bob, this may be easier for you, but I, is there any fear in our studies that we, if we do not tap something into St. John's Marsh River Water, the Canal, that we will by default have given that to the counties to the north? I mean, because.
Or to Orlando.
Right now, right now, we are, we are not in any water problems. I know people find it hard to believe, but we are one of the counties that have water. You go into Orlando and Broward, I mean, Brevard North toward Jacksonville, they're having more and more problems like South Florida.
Northwest too.
There's been no indication from St. John's that I know of that we can have any of the water in their marsh area even though it's in our county. C fifty-four is something different, but I'm just wondering if we don't tap that, do we give it up by default?
Need to put our marker on it now.
They won't let us do that.
I, I'll, let, let me start and then defer to Mike. In the last year, year and a half, we've had a couple of workshops with the St. John's Water Management District down here, and that's one of the questions that came up. Can the county reserve water in the upper St. John's Basin? And the, the premise was, we shouldn't be left high and dry if other counties up, that are up forever take the water out. And St. John's is precluded, I think, by state law from, from allocating water like that. If we had a need, they would look at that need at that time and then allocate water, but they will not, and they cannot.
I think this objective by two thousand and eighteen is, is an admirable one. I mean, if people aren't thinking, you're talking about eighteen million gallons. That's more than our capacity is today for the whole county. That's, that's, that's the new improved version, that's the, when we finish these wells, that's where we're going to be. So if we can take that much water in alternatively, you're going to have over fifty percent of your water coming from somewhere else. The problem will be is if we, is this tapping the timing, how to get that done? I mean, can we, could we switch, work switching over quicker so that we keep what we got?
My point. Your mic isn't on.
Actually, our goal is to get as much as we can from the surface water because it's actually a better utilization of water resources.
Right.
From a conservation standpoint than using groundwater.
Mm-hmm.
Because right now, that water goes to tide, so we're probably going to try to utilize as much as we can to satisfy all of our demand.
I know there was some talk about trying to pipe the reservoirs together just so you all tap it, but.
But what, what you've told us is that St. John's is telling us you're out of luck. Actually, is what you, is there any way we can put a request in now for two thousand and thirty, saying we need that?
That's what we're doing, we're trying to get as much as we can for two thousand and thirty now.
Okay.
So that's.
And you've included the St. John's out west of town as a source?
Yeah, well, actually, we're looking at C fifty-four, but they've also been in discussion. There's going to be a meeting, I believe it's October twelfth in Pond Bay, and they're going to discuss actually creating a reservoir in the South Relief, Main Relief, and North Relief Canals in the Upper Basin. So now they're actually exploring that as well.
I forgot which element, but just the elements we just looked at was that, that had the, one of the objectives is to increase the zero landscaping, which we've been talking about for a while.
The problem I, I see with this, Mike, is that we're, we can't acquire the use of water from St. John's unless we provide need.
Right.
Right, well, we have the need, and they're all for giving us our total demand through surface water.
But we don't need it, and as, as they allocate, it's based on somebody else providing that, showing the need. It's just like Orlando right now requesting the water from the St. John's. There's never been a request like that before. So, we can get somebody to say, yeah, we think it'll be there when you get ready to use it, but if these continued groups of communities are taking the water with no assurance to Indian River County that we can have it when we want it.
Are you referring to the surface water?
No.
Are you talking about the groundwater? Well, we're going to retain.
St. John's allowance for us.
They've requested water out of the river.
Whatever we have, what we're getting now with our CUP for groundwater, we'll never lose that. We'll always be able to retain that. And what we get in surface water, we'll use that and we'll be able to use either the surface water or the groundwater. So it'll be alternative water supply, and we'll be able to go back to the groundwater. We won't ever lose that allocation.
You sound very positive, but having dealt with St. John's before, I know that if you don't get your request in as I need it now, you're out of luck.
Well, that's what we're doing, we're going for it for now.
So you're going to.
Right.
Okay.
Rather than kind of whipping this, but I mean, the fact is, is that's.
It's a big issue.
I think that that's an issue and they, they at least are following. I, I would encourage all of us to follow this because this is one of the issues that comes up a lot, so.
Saigon, do you have any idea whatsoever what the capacity of draw is from private wells?
Okay.
The answer is no, right?
Yeah, we look at, no, actually, you know, we look at all these and we received, we got information from St. John. Let me.
Saigon, is this something you were going to touch on in a minute or?
No, actually, on page seven, these are the total water, water redraw that we have. And again, these are the information that came from St. John. And you can see eighty percent of water redraw for the potable water, eighty-two percent is for agricultural use, and over nine percent is for like the other recreational use and so forth. And you could see the total million gallon per year for each of those.
Is the county in reuse now? They selling reuse?
Yes. Actually, all of the, all of the reused water being used in, spraying the Gulf and some of them in the West County.
You don't have, there's none available.
We need to expand it, right?
We do sell some to Indian River Club Residential. You know, some residential, we're starting to expand out to residential.
I didn't know we had any extra capacity. You don't have any extra reuse water available, do you?
Actually, we have a little bit left in West Regional, and we're working on expanding that up to North. We have a project we're working on where we can pump that up to North and store it. And then we're also working to try to get some to Waterway Village, which they have, that's a residential use.
Mm-hmm.
They have about a hundred acres of lakes, and we're going to allow them to store that in their lakes and then repump it out to the residential for irrigation.
Right now, we have one policy that any subdivision, new subdivision that they come with a twenty-five or more lot, within one fourth of a mile of the system, they have to connect to the system. We are adding the same policy for the reuse line, that if new subdivision come with twenty-five lot or more, within one fourth of a mile of the reuse line, they have to connect to reuse line to use the reuse water for their irrigation.
Okay.
This is going to be a new policy that we are adding.
So you're talking about the purple pipe, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
And you, so anything over twenty-five?
Any new subdivision of more than twenty-five lot.
Twenty-five would be putting in.
Within one fourth of a mile of the reuse line.
Probably has to do with the size retention pond that would be required. If you get that much smaller, you wouldn't, probably wouldn't have much room.
Well, I mean, we could plan the subdivision to, to have that much room. So they could be heading towards self-sufficient.
Yeah.
Do we have a list of consumptive use permits?
Actually, there is a list behind here.
Does that include?
On the page forty-three.
Does that include the teacups too? Temporary?
Go on, okay.
I, I didn't figure that.
Yeah, I don't think that they have, I mean, I don't see anything of.
I think that'd be illuminating where, I mean, that's kind of the question you were asking. We're, we're, we're getting percentages, but we really don't see the, the consumptive permit use, the cups.
I was going to private consumptive use permits.
So I think that, that might be quite illuminating. We're, I mean, it's pretty broad here on, on the table on seven, eight, seven.
This is a, water is a major issue. People are happy now.
On the, new well in the South County, that's approval from St. John's?
Yeah, actually, in our present CUP, we have approval to go ahead and construct the seventh well in South County. And St. John's has also indicated in our workshops that they'll even allow additional wells down south. They used to not allow that.
Right.
Because of all the agriculture down at St. Lucy County. They said, you know, with all the redevelopment of agriculture going into development, there's not as much emphasis on agriculture, so they're kind of relaxing that requirement.
So we can scavenge off agriculture.
Ag gets real sensitive, ag gets real sensitive when the people that live here start stealing our water.
Well, that's my, my, my question. Do you anticipate the agricultural demand to be less coming in the future?
Again, like we were discussing with the land, your future land use element, the citrus, of course, as you know, they have lots of problem with water, but what going to replace the citrus, we really don't know at this point, is really a big unknown. But all of this agricultural land that we have somehow, some way going to be used, you know, and then how much of it going to be used for other kind of crop or so forth? At this point, we really don't know that. But again, we know that there's lots of technique that they could use to actually, you know, reduce even for the agriculture to reduce, you know, the use, you know, like there is a drip irrigation and this kind of stuff.
More surface water in the South.
Yeah.
Saigon, on page eleven, you've got a statement, Bob, whoever, on the first paragraph last sentence says, since this is an important activity, the county should adopt a policy indicating the county would continue that practice.
Yes.
We don't have that as a policy statement somewhere?
Actually, again, we are adding this thing as a policy statement. If you want, do you want me to continue and we can get there?
That's what I was, that's what I was going to ask, sorry.
You have, again, that is really important issue and we are working on it.
Let me ask Mike another question.
Sure.
You, you seem confident in our direction and what's going to happen in Indian River County. Do you know how many new wells St. Lucy County is requesting or has been permitted?
I heard at one time it was an enormous amount. I'm going to say it was close to, these were Florida aquifer wells.
Right. Forty-five?
Yeah, something like that.
And the meta-question is, have your studies shown an increase in salts in our surface and our deep water wells over the past fifteen years?
Our particular wells have not, with the exception of one down south, which it was a real old well and it's been constantly running, and it did go up to one hundred parts per million. It went from around two hundred and sixty parts per million to about three hundred and sixty parts per million of, of chlorides, and so that was a slight.
I can tell you, in West County, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have, we, I can't think of any wells out there that I know of under a thousand.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, it's, and citrus means twelve hundred or less. I mean, we're borderline in a lot of spots. St. Lucy County is even worse than we are.
Is that TDS or chlorides?
TDS.
Okay, yeah, obviously referring to chlorides.
You're just calling it chlorides, okay.
And, but they did say, St. John said, you know, if we were just to kind of give that, that one well a little bit of rest, they expect the chloride levels to go down.
Aren't there some ranches west of town that have wells that they will not allow their cattle access to?
I'm not sure.
I don't, I haven't heard that, Greg, I don't know. I don't know. I know, I know we do a lot of pumping out of the, we fill our ditches and then we mix it with groundwater. We do a lot of pumping out of the ditches now rather than using straight well water.
We're doing a lot of testing on a lot of agricultural wells now, getting ready for the CUP and everything, so I could probably get you that information. I don't think much has changed. We've only been testing for about two years now with CDM, but we could get you that information. I don't think much has changed in the last two years, really.
That's okay, Mike. My, my point really is that there are so many variables associated with the use of water in the future.
Right.
And our, you know, we, we're going to drill waters into the Florida, and I don't think there's anyone that feels assured that that's going to be available in two thousand and thirty if we allow the permitting that's continued to be allowed.
At the quality.
And everything out here west of town that we can't use, in essence, until we have the need to prove the need.
Right.
As others request, as I said before, Orlando's the best example we have of somebody that's just jumped into the fray. Five years ago, who thought Orlando was going to ask the St. John's for water? Yet they are now. So as those allowances occur with the St. John's and C fifty-four waters are available, what assurance do we have other than our deep wells hoping that those are going to allow us the water that we need? And I'm not talking about growth. I just think there are enormous number of variables in that these figures that we have are not necessarily going to be as good in ten years as they are now.
Do you have a question or a political statement?
Political statement.
Okay. Greg is going to get down off his soapbox now. My ADD and mental capacity is drifting, so we're going to go back to the presentation unless y'all have something of a direct point here, so, okay. Saigon.
We, okay, five of the objectives of the potter water sub-element achieved. One is not due till two thousand and twenty, and one, which was related to the water conservation, we didn't achieve this one. This table shows all the, all the objectives that achieved. At the left-hand side, those that are colored, kind of a purple one, those are the objective that are required by the state law that we have to have those objectives. Under Objective One, we're going to add, again, portions of the county is served by the city of Viro Beach. And we are adding the new objective to make sure that we are not issuing any building permit till we coordinate with the city of Viro Beach and make sure that they have sufficient water and capacity to serve before we issue the building permit. Objective Four and policies under Objective Four are for water conservation. We are adding some new policies. One of them, as I mentioned, is required the expansion of affront reuse and the subdivision to connect to that one, the new subdivision. One is for the revision of the current pricing plan to kind of discourage, you know, the high water use. The other one is to provide incentive for a low water use. And also, we are adding another objective to use the water for the retention pond for irrigation instead of, instead of the well water. Also, we are adding some new objective, again, this is the objective for alternative water supply. We didn't have this one, this is a brand-new objective. We are adding objective that by two thousand and eighteen, at least eighteen million gallon per day of the water going to come from another source beside the Floyd and Aquifer. And these are the policies that we're going to have under that one. That by year two thousand and ten, Utilities Department, they coordinate with the St. John to actually identify what that source is, because still, we don't know exactly what that source is. When they identify what the source is, then they're going to apply for the permit, and by two thousand and twelve, they're going to have all the permit. Then by two thousand and thirteen, they're going to have all the construction plan, and then they're going to have all the building associated and the infrastructure that they need to use that water for that new source by two thousand and fifteen, that they could be ready by two thousand and eighteen to use that source, whatever that source is. And again, at this point, again, they really don't know what that source is, but through this process, they're going to identify that.
See, if we'd just let you go on with the program, we'd have had our answers, right?
Okay, also, we adding the new objective for the brine disposal, and we want to prohibit disposal of the water either to the Indian River Canal or to the connecting canal. And again, we have a set of policies similar to what we had, that by two thousand and ten, they had to identify alternative brine discharge location. It could be another marsh, you know, treatment or deep well injection, or city of Viro Beach, they have a deep well injection that they could connect. Again, by two thousand and twelve, they get permit and then they do the construction by two thousand and fifteen. And that's basically as far as the water is concerned. Again, the emphasis is that they did a good job expanding the services. Now, we are really trying to do the water conservation at one hand, and the other hand, finding the different source of the water that we could use in conjunction with the Floyd and Aquifer.
Okay. Thank you, Saigon. Does anybody have a, you know, anything on policy or, or objectives that they, you know?
What are the incentives that you're going to be using to get people to use less water? What are the incentives that you're gonna be using to get people to use less water?
Well, certainly, you know, our rates are structured. We have the inclining block rate structure, so the more water people use, let's just take a typical household, for example. The rates start out at zero to 3,000 gallons around, I think it's around $2.50 per thousand. And then as they go over 3,000, they jump up to around, I believe it's close to 270 per thousand.
Two-seven.
And then once they.
I took notes the other day. Go ahead. I just asked him this question in real world.
And then I think they stayed at from 3,000 to 7,000 and then from 7,000 to 13,000, I believe they're around $3.50 per thousand.
So you think we can get people, to get down from the, was it 109 or 100, what was it? I forgot the figure. From the 60s, he went up to 100 and something in consumption per cap.
Sixty-one to 100 and more now.
Yeah, 109. Can you get them, can we get people down to the?
Well, I think so. And then, you know, with the.
Using your incentive.
Planning requirements for the zero scape landscaping and, you know, hopefully with more drought tolerant landscaping and just with more reuse water, providing more reuse water to residential customers, that kind of thing. And I think that with more water conservation areas and not providing potable water for irrigation, that kind of thing, we're, we're sort of put a cuff on that. I think we can get it down more, hopefully. I mean, really, most design practices are basically about 100 gallons per capita per day. It's 100 gallons per person per day. So it might be kind of difficult, but I do expect the use to go down, especially during drought, drought periods.
The science is there.
Yeah, the science is there, especially, you know, we do see a big spike when, when the drought periods hit, when the rainfall stops, so I do expect those spikes to go down.
So the pocketbook will be a good one.
Yeah, definitely it'll hit them in the pocketbook when they use.
Sasan, have.
Get rain barrels too.
Right, exactly.
I would like to try.
Like to try to.
Do you want to comment on this letter?
Yes.
Have you been in talking to Ms. Ekra?
Exactly. I would like to, before we go to the other one, talk about Ms. Ekra's, you know, letter that she sent. And also, you started, I give you our response to her letter and I promised her that we're gonna bring this one to your attention. There was a little bit of misinformation. She thought that in a planning department, we made the determination as far as the availability of water and sewer, and that's not the way that it worked. The way that it worked as far as the concurrency, we are in a planning department called coordinating agency. Basically, the applicant give us the application. We send the application to all the other department, like we send it to utilities department for utilities to make determination as far as the water and sewer availability. We send to the traffic, we send to the school board. All of these groups, they would look for their own particular area and when they sign up in our system and they say that the capacity is available, then we go in the planning and we issue the certificate. Therefore, the answer is that whatever she wants, we are doing it right now because planning does not make any determination as far as the availability. Actually, utilities department for the water and sewer, they make that determination. Also, information that provided as far as the water use and so forth was based on the CDM report that they did few years ago in the boom years and as you know, everything is changed right now and all the projection are different. And I sent her that email and hopefully that, again, I haven't heard anything back from her, but hopefully that addressed her concern.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts, comments on potable water? If not, we're gonna move on to the.
I have one on objective two, page 23, Sasan.
Yes.
I threw mine away. I thought we were gone.
Yeah, no, it's a short one.
Okay.
Yes.
We have reached 60% of the residential connection target was met.
Yes.
I mean, in the next 20 years, we're only gonna increase that by 10%, but our objective is 70%. I mean, 20 years is a long time. We should be able to put more water lines in.
For, actually, the main water lines you're in and all of the new subdivision that are required to connect. However, some of the existing subdivision is very hard to get them to connect. We have the capacity in the county to connect them, but in order to do that, we need to do assessment. They have to pay their share of connecting and this is become difficulties that many of these existing subdivision, they actually, they want the water. There is no doubt about it, but they don't want to pay for it through the assessment. And that is the issue that we have. Actually, utilities department, they were ready to do the water and sewer for the whole Vero Lake estate, but again, the people, they didn't want. And the existing subdivision, that's the main difficulty that we have. But as far as all the new subdivision, they have to connect and they would connect the system.
Oh, I mean, 70% could be easily met in 20 years then.
I'm sure that we meet the 70%.
Yeah, I think 70% would be a problem, but like Sasan was saying, you know, we even went a step beyond. The Board of County Commissioners approved us to run about seven and a half miles to expand into Vero Lake Estates and we just did that through master plan lines. And we thought, the thought was, when, once we expanded in there, that a lot of people would come forward and want to go ahead with assessment projects, but even though it's gotten relatively close to their homes, it hasn't occurred, so. But just goes to show you, it's, you know, especially in tough economical times.
Yeah, well, we're talking over a 20-year period, only increasing it 10%, I mean, that's not really a lot.
No, it's not, but really, we've expanded, we've expanded all the.
You're suggesting that it might be more as an object, as a goal, a reaching goal to go to 80% or reach higher than 70%?
Because you want to encourage people to hook up the city water.
With your permission, I could again coordinate with Mike and we could look at this number again and see actually if, this is again the target that we want to meet and should be again measurable and so forth. And I'm gonna coordinate with Mike and see if there is any way that we could increase that one, then we could.
As an aside, everything has, usually there are offshoots to that. If we set that as an objective, which I have no objection with tonight, but you could in fact be encouraging them to reduce their, or reduce the fee structure hookup in order to achieve the other objective and keep the prices down when the costs go up and, and I'm just suggesting, it's like double intrigue of bookkeeping. When you, when you hit a goal, you, you, you push one and something pops up somewhere else, so.
Yeah, your existing ratepayers would have to subsidize.
I mean, I understand that Mike's bureaucratic and he doesn't want much of a goal, but that's okay.
But again, we better look at them and see if they could increase.
Yeah, you want to encourage people to hook up.
Yes.
When you have a subdivision that's way out somewhere and they hook up and then, then a couple or more sign up next to the water, closer to the water source than that one out a long way, don't they share, isn't there some cost sharing?
Yeah, there's, even though they didn't have to pay to extend the line, a lot of times we'll extend the lines through master plan lines, transmission lines, they still have to pay their proportionate share through a line extension fee. And so we kind of developed that as an equalization so that certain people weren't getting disproportionate, you know, free ride, so to speak, so that, you know, other people were having to pay assessments and these people that happened to be adjacent to these master plan lines weren't having to pay anything. So we developed that equalization line extension fee so that everybody kind of has to pay.
Right, the same. Okay, anything else on water? Good, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Sasan.
The next, the next one is the recreation openness space and we have Recreation Department Director, Mr. Chris Crawford there, that he's gonna help me with this one. Actually, they've been very helpful, again, reviewing this thing and give us the information. And we really think with all the changes that we are recommending to the recreation element is gonna be really improved element.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. All right, Sasan.
Okay. Again, this recreation ELR being reviewed by Park and Recreation Committee. We went to them several time in a different occasion and we're gonna go to them again on October 2nd for the, hopefully the last time that they could take a look at it. Number of the park increased, the acreage increased. Also, we increased our level of service for the parks. The amount of the openness space, publicly owned openness space in the county increased. Agricultural land decreased as we mentioned to you before. These slide here and the next one shows the, all the objective that we achieved and also the one with the colored one, those are the ones that required by the state. We are recommending lots of new policies for this one. One of them, our Recreation Department, they're gonna evaluate their user fee structure and make sure that their full cost recovery for the adult program, that, you know, they don't, because especially in this budget time, they could cover their costs of providing those program. Also, they're gonna look at the fee structure and make sure that the east, the people out of the county, they use the facilities, there's a surcharge for that one. We're gonna have.
Does this include the gun range?
Pardon?
Thank you. Does this include the gun range?
Including the gun range, you're gonna have a surcharge for the.
Hit, push the button. There you go.
Good evening, Mr. Chair members. While I don't oversee the.
Back up a little. There you go.
While I don't oversee the, the gun range, my knowledge of that is, is that was constructed with various state and federal grants, which would could prohibit, prohibit the opportunity to look at differential fee structures and, but we'd be happy to talk to the respective manager and, and bring that information back to you at the appropriate time.
I think we really need to do that.
Let me rephrase his question out of curiosity, because there has been, and not to pick on the gun range necessarily, but if the gun range was an enterprise fund and now it's been incorporated into the county budget, if this is the county goal where the, the rec areas cover their own themselves, in essence, aren't we backing into a reason for them to have to raise, at least raise the fees slightly? In general, if they can't raise them in different levels for different people, is there a possibility that something like that, the fees would then raise?
I think the, Mr. Chair, the, the fees have been.
You can really call me George, you'll be fine.
Okay, George, good evening, sir. I'm used to working with our Parks and Recreation Committee on those protocols, sir. But certainly the fees can be looked at, I think, not with my knowledge of the gun range, I think looking at some alternative fee structures and other events and activities that, that may be able to expand that, such as bringing.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I wasn't looking for a specific here, I just, by bringing it into, by bringing it under the county now and with this as an objective, that all our, all of our recreation is gonna have to look at the fees, right?
No, I, I think what, what that policy talks about is programs.
Ah, okay.
Covering the full cost of adult programs. So if we have a program for gun safety, that's what, but it's not, yeah, it's not like our, our pools right now don't.
We don't have a fee.
Well, we have some fees, but we don't recover the whole cost of the pool.
Okay, so I mean.
We recover the cost of the program.
Okay, so we're still gonna decide in the budget and the commission will decide whether or not we will recover 100% or not. We're not forcing the issue. Okay, very good.
Do you know, do you know if the shooting range is an enterprise fund or not?
It just, they, the Board of County Commissioners just decided that they were gonna transition from it being an enterprise fund, which it has been since it was built a few years ago, to being just part of the tax budget. So it was, it will pay a portion of its own way, but it won't be entirely.
That is but one of our recreation requirement, or potential uses or availability in the county, so we'll talk about all recreation now. Moving ahead, Sasan.
Close that damn place down.
Okay, also, our recreation is pretty wide. However, they want to look at the area south of State Road 60 versus the area north of State Road 60, because we have over 1,500 acres of the park and out of that one, only 160 acres is south of State Road 60. They want to look at that one and see, you know, if, how the thing is distributed and how it should be distributed in future. Again, this is something that the Park and Recreation Department, they're gonna do. They're also gonna evaluate the new funding source such as privatization or partnership. They're gonna look at the new source of revenue such as naming right, beach and park concession and the other thing. Again, they try to see whatever way they could raise some more money.
All right.
They're also gonna look at the creating a foundation to receive donation of land and they gonna continue charging the recreation impact fee. Also, they are planning to update the North County and South County Regional Plan, Master Plan. Another thing that's very important, they're gonna do a survey to see actually how the people, they use the facilities and each year, they're gonna identify their core facilities. One thing right now, they have lots of recreation program, the people have to come and sign up in the Recreation Department. We are planning to computerize this one, that the people could actually sign up on the computer versus coming in the Recreation Department. Also, they would like to have a contact agreement with the School Board for exchange of the County 16th Street Complex with the School Board with some other property and sign the agreement with municipalities when needed for provision of the county-wide program and services. And that's in a nutshell is for.
Man, I'm gonna go back.
Again, you know, like, we are adding lots of new policies, but again, I think it's gonna make, you know, the recreation element much better and there's lots of information that we don't have. Hopefully, we could gather those information.
Was there any talk whatsoever about privatizing the shooting range?
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
George, just take a deep breath. This is, this, that range is sucking up so much money, it's absolutely absurd.
Oh, man.
I, I don't really know. I, I haven't been.
I don't think there was.
It's not federal money. It was built with federal, state and local funds.
Right.
Doesn't mean we have to support it, it's a trouble.
The good news is, is it'll be budget item, so you can deal with it on the budget now, so.
I will.
Yeah. All right, anybody have any other questions for Sasan on recreation before?
I have a few.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. I just have one. With all the expansion on 58th Avenue, is there any room to expand Sandridge Golf Course? Do we have any more property there?
I don't think we do.
No, we don't.
Okay.
My comment was on the bicycle trails and things. We have all these mosquito impoundments and I would think that they would be just really sitting there waiting to be utilized for hiking trails and especially along.
Actually, let me, let me.
I asked that before, but do we have access to them?
Yeah, well, let me, let me just tell you.
Because they keep them locked, I just think we could get them.
The MPO has been doing greenway plans. We started out with the Central County Greenway Plan and we, we just finished the North County. The South County is really gonna focus on that, because we've always wanted to connect the impoundments in the South County from the Vista Impoundments and the 14th Street Canal.
Right.
Down to Orca and, and that is gonna be one of, one of the initiatives in the South County.
The reason I ask is that, I mean, who, within the compounds, who controls the compounds? With, I mean, the dykes around the.
Well, some are private and some are public.
I know they're public, I just thought there was, it wasn't.
No, they're, they're not all public.
Pardon me?
They're not all public.
There's some are private.
Correct, correct.
But I mean, it's not, the district, the mosquito control district, I just wondered because we've asked, but I've asked about this before and I don't remember ever hearing what I thought was a good answer or what I'd like to see and that's they open up.
I think they maintain the dykes and they maintain the accessways on the dykes that they, that they have, but most of the impoundments are, are public.
Okay, well, they've got gates with locks on them, that's why I was wondering.
They don't want people driving on them, but walking and bicycling, I don't think there's gonna be a problem.
Okay.
And that, that will be the initiative in, in the South.
And even the canals, I know you have a problem there.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I think we need to think in terms of opening, that's a lot of recreational use that.
Now, we, we definitely want to do that.
And then I had one more comment and then Bob knows what I'm talking about.
There you go.
Is on the, on some of the conservation lines that we have purchased and I brought it up a little bit the last meeting we had and we kind of ran out of time, but I am really concerned that there are, and some of the conservation, the public is wanting to access to some of these lands and we do have a few sites that people could get on right away. And, and Bob was telling me that needs to make some changes before we can do it. One is the Russell Groves property and we should have gotten about a year, we're a year or two years behind on that one. And there's an access road into the river and there's a place that you can put your kayak or canoes into it. There's, there's, it's, it's an old grove, but they have a large area for parking. You could probably put maybe 10, 12 cars in there. All it's requiring is probably some railroad ties or something like that to show where people could go in, but somehow that doesn't seem to get done.
Roland's here and let us tag team this. Roland's here, and let us tag team this for a minute. We discussed this for probably the past year or so, since, since the, since there's been more of an initiative to open up the Russell Grove property. The concern we have is, when you start getting additional vehicles in an unimproved, unstabilized area, what you're going to, you could have actually more problems. You could be generating runoff that will actually get suspended solids into the river, you know, it depends, you create some problems if you really don't put the infrastructure in. Ideally, we will have something like we have on the St. Sebastian, the west side of the St. Sebastian River near the Fisher property, where we have the canoe launch there, and we have some parking for it. You know, our concern is just allowing access with no improvements, no stabilization, and then-
I'm not sure what improvements you're talking about, or the stabilization that's needed. I mean, it's a grass, mold, mold, it's mold-
Called liability control.
Well, maybe this-
Well, I think, you know, part of the concern, Roland Boyce, Chief of Environmental Planning, I mean, some of these elements we've been talking about, conservation element, one of the main objectives was surface water quality, we have all these requirements for water treatment, for, for all developments in the county. I understand the point, we want to get these properties open, but we're trying to balance the whole point of all these regulations we have, which are to protect the environment and to perfect, protect people who use property, but to also balance that with Dr. Baker.
Would, and I'm thinking about the element here, rather than the specifics of the Russell Grove, is could, couldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't maybe something be added that said, we open two of these a year, or something that would make moving ahead? So now, you know, in the evaluation process, that's, you know, your objective is to open as much possible in these areas as possible, and then your goal would, you know, your goal would be to open them, the objective would be to try and open up two a year, or one every year, or whatever you all feel is reasonable, but, and at the end, if we don't do it, we didn't succeed, but at least you've got a target-
Measure.
-in writing, and that's what you look for. And that would be, I think that probably goes back under conservation, doesn't it? Or does that go under recreate, that probably goes under recreation, I guess.
Well, that's a combination, that the, right now, it's under the recreation-
I don't think that would complicate anything, that would at least put something in.
Apartment.
You've got to deal with it, and that's, I think, the point.
Well, part of it is that we don't, they don't have enough staff on this particular aspect here, and this is just the management plan here, and you can see it's way behind. I mean, the, the things that need to be done haven't really got started yet.
And, and let me just tell you, what we try to do, given the budgetary issues and problems that we have now, we try to get these grant funded. To give you an idea, the canoe launch up there near the Fisher property was a legislative earmark, really, that the legislature funded that. We're going to provide access improvements to the Wabaso Conservation Area with the 510 improvement, so we'll be opening that up. We got grants for the Captain Forrester, we got grants for Prang Island.
But I mean, if we put it, if we put something down in here, Bob, that says, the objective is to open them, we're going to try one or two a year, whatever it is, and then we list them by priority, those of us involved in legislature stuff, we've got a target list that when we're up there, we've got nothing else to do, we can say, hey, how about the money for this, or whatever? Because right now, it's just, we're not, it's kind of left hanging, I think, is the point.
Well, there's a volunteer group that's willing to work to help us along, and it's just, it's been stung.
So George's suggestion is that you add it to the goals, can we do that?
And I don't know if we can do it or not, but I think, I don't see why we can't.
We could encourage you to do that.
But I don't see why you can't open it up for a few people, and if there's a problem, runoff, then sure, close it down, or try to do the improvements, but just-
An elitist project.
But just to, just not to, just let it sit festering when people really want to get in and do something is very frustrating.
You know, I see staff's concern is you've got, you know, that we've got a lot of other bigger issues in some of my people's minds, bigger fish to fry, bigger issues, but on the other hand, I think that, I don't see why this couldn't be an objective, and try and put something in it measurable, and then it's, you know, that's what this is for. And I think that we get it, and-
The whole idea.
And then at least it's addressed, because I mean-
I'll tell you something, we-
Not to take anything away from Dick, I mean, Richard, is that, you know, you push hard as you want right now, but if you need something, writing like that to get it to move, I think.
We can, we can work on something and bring it to you at your workshop meeting on Tuesday morning at 9 o'clock.
Great, I'll be in Carolina.
That would be wonderful, thank you so much, thank you.
What's his name?
Richard, did you have a, okay? With that, just to finish that, commiserate with that, it's going to have to be, at some point, if you do an objective, there'd be a plan to back it up, and I think, I mean, it's time and effort, and it may not fit, but I think we have-
These management plans in for these areas, or you'd think that the state would actually have some, I mean, they're requiring these management plans, and you would think that there'd be some oversight, to see that the county files through on these things. They haven't even started yet.
Now, let me tell you something, we have to do stewardship reports every year for every project that we have FCT funds on, and I think the state realizes that we may be pretty ambitious with our public access improvements, and we're behind in several, but as I said, we've got plans to open several more up, like the Wabaso scrub, where it's going to minimize the cost, because we'll do it with the roadway improvement.
Let's try and target so many a year and see what happens, okay?
Screaming right along.
All right, Saigon.
Okay.
Which workshop is that, by the way?
This is the next step in the, this is a follow-up on-
The 30th, Tuesday, the 30th, this Tuesday.
We go into more EAR.
Can we just say briefly, that one of the elements we're looking at on Tuesday is the coastal management element, and it actually does get into public access to resources.
Right.
So there actually is, right, so what we're talking about, we can talk about it on Tuesday.
Okay. The Tuesday is more, is the next batch of the, of these, so.
I'm really trying to get more support for Roland, I mean, I'm not criticizing him, but we, but we're talking about water for the next 30, 20, 30 years, we've got to start thinking about how we're going to manage these lands, that we've spent now, what, 69 million, $69 million, right, roughly? And so we had a 26 million plus another 50 million. And we matched, the state has come in and matched almost one to one on a lot of it, 60 million out of 69. So, I mean-
I think there's grant money out there, a volunteer group will help them do it.
And this particular, this particular place is going to be producing a lot of pepper. We're going to have, see, this place is, is an old grove.
Oh, I know.
And it's all fertilized and ready to go, and it's been sitting there for five years with nothing. So then the cost is going to be tremendous going in there. So-
They got your message.
Thank you.
We're going to take this box, back down to Greg next, I guess, or, move them around, his point well taken.
I want my turn.
Okay, next is that-
The next element is the intergovernmental coordination element. Actually, I brought this element to you last year one time, and this is for a second time that you could see this element.
Are we getting along any better now?
As far as intergovernmental coordination element is concerned, of course, at any minute, any time, any days, we have to coordinate with 50, 60 different, you know, federal, state, and local agencies. We have very extensive, you know, information here, element by element, and how those coordination works. I would like to bring the attention to you some of the issues as far as intergovernmental coordination. The major one is the annexation by municipalities, that again, they annex more than 24,000 acres of the Connie land, and again, that is one major issue as far as the coordination is concerned, and how those land being used. Actually, recreation system and who's going to be used what and so forth is always an issue, because we're always trying to differentiate between the cities and counties, but as a people, you know, we go whenever is available, we don't say, okay, I'm living in Connie, using the Connie facilities. Which erosion is another thing that we look at, provision of the utilities, road improvement, and one of the items that some of you remember was with the St. John River Water Management attempt to sell some of the conservation land, that of course, we didn't want that thing to happen. And these are some of the issues that we are looking at. These are the objectives of the element, and as you can see, they are, all of them, either completely or partially, they met, and beside the objective four, they are required by the Connie, by the state regulation to have that one. We are requiring some new policies, one of them is, we are, we would like to request the legislature to prohibit the sale of the conservation land by Water Management District, that if they buy the land for conservation, then they cannot sell it. The other one is for the concurrency, again, we are talking with the water concurrency to coordinate with City of Willow Beach, but also to coordinate with St. John for the water supply, because again, that's really one of the major issue. And that's basically for the recre, I mean, for the intergovernmental coordination. Overall, the coordination is-
It's interchangeable, if you've ever been to any governmental meetings, if you-
We are working, we are working very good with all the other agencies and whatever that we need to work, but again, some of the major issue, like I mentioned, is the annexation, provision of the facilities, and also to prohibit, you know, Water Management to sell those conservation lands.
And just to tell you, probably one of our best intergovernmental coordination successes has been with the school board this year, getting the inter-local agreement, the public school facility plan, and all of the elements of the coordination that was mandated by the state.
Is that complete, Bob?
It is complete.
Excuse me?
And we're actually implementing school concurrency right now.
You guys need a pat on the back for that, I don't think anybody knows what work went into that.
Actually, the first school concurrency went through like this week.
We'll take that pat on the back, thank you very much.
I'm talking to Bob, Uncle Bob, Uncle Bob here's the one that started it. Screaming right along, this is very dark.
Okay, does anybody have any comments intergovernmentally? I mean, it's, it's an important process that we do have to follow, but I, they do a pretty good job, they yell at each other a lot, anyway.
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman, if I may, about intergovernmental action.
No, you may not.
It actually coordinates with recreation, and I wanted to ask Cliff, and I didn't get a chance to, but I know the school board is, where some in the school district is starting to not permit the county to utilize some of their recreation areas, and I was just wondering, is there any chance that there can, agreement can be made between the recreation department and the school board, as far as, you know, utilizing some of the recreation opportunities at the different schools, at least during the weekends, or after-school hours?
Actually, that's one of the policies that we have in there, is to work with the school board to get formal agreements.
Good, okay.
We have an excellent risk manager, whose philosophy is, nobody uses it. We have a school board whose philosophy is, it belongs to the public. So we're coming to a meeting of the minds, but it is the direction of the board, and in fact, I think it was not too long ago, in an article a couple of weeks ago in the Press Journal, that it is the board, it was stated, that it is the board's philosophy that we need to allow more access. And we are working with our board attorney that we've had for about a year and a half now, as to how we can accomplish both the risk management concerns and the concerns of the public for not having access. You know, having been here over 35 years, I'm used to those facilities being open and ready, and as long as there aren't students on campus, that's the qualifier, and will always be the qualifier, as long as there's not students on campus. We need to make every effort, and our new buildings, we have, we're making, we're ensuring our new middle school BB, which is also a green school, that that middle school BB is also going to have outside access, where we can still keep the control in a contained environment, protecting our internals, but we're going to have a lot of outside access into different facilities at that middle school BB. I think it's going to be a win-win for the community as well as for the district, so. The answer is yes, but.
No, that's fantastic, and I think, you know, originally, we heard a report by the Chamber of Commerce, and one of their goals or objectives is to be able to keep young people around, and I got to tell you, I think Cliff does a fantastic job, and I think we do a great job with the money that we have, but there is a real lack of recreational opportunities for young people, and if it's not there, I think they'll go elsewhere.
Thank you, Carol.
I got a question. Okay.
Excuse me.
I'm leaving.
I've got to go to sleep.
If you get, oh, come on, Craig. If you get that agreement with risk management, et cetera, I know at one time, we'd had, we had a program where we were trying to institute parks with new schools, and a joint use between the two facilities, is that going to be a possibility if the, if you can get it worked out with-
If we can, that's certainly something, in fact, when, before the South County High School construction was halted, because we certainly didn't have the numbers then, we don't have the numbers now, to build that South County High School, what we were going, what we were looking at was use of the South County Park. So yes, that's still a focus, when appropriate, when appropriate, of course.
There's always a caveat, so. Okay, any other comments? Good. Moving to the last element tonight is the, okay, capital improvements element, and Bill, are you doing this?
Yeah, I'm going to give Saigon a break now. Good evening, commissioners. Switch that over there. Okay. The overall goal of the capital improvements element is to provide needed capital improvements through the use of sound fiscal decision-making. Through the EAR, the county is determining if we are achieving the steps we set to achieve the goal, and whether or not any changes to those are needed. With the CIE EAR, the Planning and Zoning Commission has primary review and comment responsibility. The CIE is different from the other elements, in that it is updated yearly. New projects are added, completed projects are removed, text tables, figures are revised, and new state requirements are addressed. In fact, staff is now in the process of drafting a revised CIE that must be adopted by December. As a result, the CIE does not contain extensive, the CIE EAR does not contain extensive recommendations. Since the time of plan adoption, revenues increased 161.4% from 104,627,000 to 273,476,000. The largest percentage increases were in federal and state funding, which is kind of significant to note. There's an error in the state funding, it actually should be around 780%, and the federal is 598.2%.
That's coming to an end.
Expenditures increased by 188.52% from 71,207,503 to 205,448,575. And of the two, the ones that increased the most were general government expenditures, had a little over 40 million, and public safety expenditures, a little bit over 37 Outstanding debt increased by 56.5% from 86,730,000 to 135,805,000. And since the time of the last major plan update, five objectives were achieved, and 37 policies were implemented, which coincidentally is the number of policies and objectives that are in the element. And you've seen this table before, and this one, it's all, all of them are achieved, all the objectives. And one thing to note, all of the objectives you see here are required by the Florida Administrative Code. One should be maintained, three should have their, the staff recommends that one should be maintained, three should have their target dates revised, and one should have its target revised. And the only one we have highlighted here is one with the target revised, which is more of just a changing of some of the words. Revised objective one to state that the county will undertake capital projects to prevent deficiencies, and currently it says eliminate deficiencies, to accommodate future growth and address obsolete or worn-out facilities. And the last point is no-
Is that like Level C on traffic? Okay, go ahead.
No subsidy changes-
I got the soapbox back.
Since the remaining objectives and policies. With that, if you have any questions or comments?
If anybody cared to comment, or any thoughts on this?
Sure do.
I don't think we're going to have that 700 and some odd percent and 500% of the federal and state funding now, you might want to call up and see what bank you own instead, I guess. Okay, well, thank you all, you know, have not put a huge amount of work into these. We do have Tuesday morning at nine o'clock, until we've got, we're going to go through four or five more elements?
Actually, we're going to be pretty lenient, only three elements, and actually, those are the last three. You will have seen- You will have seen everything after Tuesday morning.
Okay, good.
And I think you are being handed your package right now.
Those three?
And I, I...
And one of the others is here now?
I, I can tell you, we, we just finished the drafts of these last three elements, and that's why they're getting to you now.
Okay. The, oh, we've got one other issue that I guess will come up later. Has anybody got any commissioners' matters? Planning matters, the sand mining is coming up?
It is, October 6th at 2:00 PM, the Board of County Commissioners is having their special meeting to go over the 38 recommendations, you know, they started that conversation or that discussion at a regular meeting, and kind of ran out of time. One of the reasons they ran out of time was the other thing I was just going to update you on, on the condition for the 4th Street Imagine Schools. Board of County Commissioners wound up changing a condition that they had attached to that special exception approval, it was different from what you all had recommended and staff recommended, and they did away with the left turn lane condition, prohibited left turns at that, at that driveway at 4th Street, requiring an officer basically direct traffic there, and to make sure that there's an operational condition that they not back up onto 4th Street, and a lot of the time, actually, was spent talking about queuing and so forth on site. And also, the developer is contributing either funds of security, kind of for a long period of time, in the event that the county has a project on 4th Street to just roll in a turn lane for that, and that was the, that was the outcome of that, of that meeting. And I don't have any other matters to update you on.
Okay. George, anything else? I know we're keeping you up, it's past your bedtime.
It is, about 12 minutes.
Okay, well, thank you all for your attention tonight, we're adjourned.